What were they?
They were, so I can write them down.
Five and eight.
Oh, here. I covered it.
Five and eight.
Okay.
Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday night council meeting for October 28th. And call the order. And for those who would like to participate, please rise for the invocation, and we have asterisks.
Let's pray. God, we want to be about your work tonight of loving the people of Spring Hill, loving them enough to do the work on their behalf that it takes to be a great city and a great place to live. So, God, inspire our hearts and our spirits to come together in unity, to come together with grace, to come together acknowledging the good intentions of everyone who is in this room. God, we thank you for this space and this time to be about your work. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, can you call the roll?
Mr. Leighton.
Here.
Mr. Owen.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Eckert.
Here.
Mrs. Roth.
Here.
Mayor Ellis. We do have a quorum present president. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda, we just have the one item 11A was added. I think everybody has a copy of that.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is going to be citizen participation, and we have one, Mr. Boswell.
Hi, Council. I just wanted to, my name's Steve Boswell, I'm 504 North Jackson. I was here at the last council meeting discussing an issue about code enforcement and the mishap that had happened actually down on Main Street. It went from, it hasn't gone anywhere is, I guess, what I'm trying to get to. There's been no answers, there's been no idea of where the things are. I've been recently told that the city is changing council, so I understand that it's going to lag a little bit in the progress of it. But what really is the main point is that I have been begging and pleading with the city to get the codes more layman, more straight, more straightforward, not just this whatever the opinion of the officer is. Because we've gone through five enforcement officers in the last six years, and everybody's opinion differs. And our codes are so vague and left up to interpretation that nobody could possibly feel safe that their things aren't going to be taken, whether it's from their front yard, their backyard, behind their privacy fence, or wherever. And I just want to make sure that this issue gets resolved, and I want to bring it to the council's attention that this is a problem, and it's not just me or the person on Main Street. It is every citizen in Spring Hill needs to be able to feel secure that they can go to work and come home, and their things will still be in their driveway or in their backyard as long as they are abiding by the codes. And the codes need to be clear, and they are not. Anyway, I also wanted to also state that during the midst of the mayhem, on the 16th, I believe it was, of September, or maybe it was a different date, the codes enforcement officer told the person to take things to the backyard if they didn't want them taken, which is fine, they have a privacy fence and enclosed, yet they were still taking things out of the backyard. So, I have a lot of confusion and a lot of frustration going on there. I think if we're going to put on our big boy britches and try to be like Overland Park or Prairie Village or Leewood, then we really need to respect our citizens and we really need to get some codes straight. Thank you, that's all I have to say, guys.
Thank you. Next is going to be the consent agenda, and I have two questions before we approve it. One be on.
Can you turn your voice up?
He can't hear it? There you go. How's that? Better?
Thank you.
All right. I have two questions, and one's going to be through our fire district approval, and we have Chief Francis here, if he could come up. I had some people asking a little confusion about the contract and the existing fire district.
You're referring to number five?
Number five. You could just give us a quick update to clarify the two differences.
Okay. Jim Francis, Fire Chief, Fire District Two. So, the city contracts, excuse me, the Fire District contracts with the city to provide service to the portion of the city that's not in our taxing district. That is roughly one square mile in the old part of town between Woodland and Lone Elm, 215th Street to 207th Street, and then all of the portion of Miami County. So, that is known as the contract area. The rest is within our taxing district, so the contract covers that area. Specifically, what was your question?
I had people asking me about the taxing area. They thought there was a little confusion about it, and me and you had talked about it earlier, and it was, they thought there was a change, and I said, no, there really isn't a change.
Yeah, there's no, there's no change with that. And so, Fire District Two collects general fund mill levy and bond levy within our taxing district, and that's primarily the new development on the north side of town is in our taxing district. The city collects its own fire service mill levy for the original old part of town and the Miami County portion of city of Spring Hill. Two separate tax levies. The Fire District's levy, that structure, the Fire District is still remaining the taxing district, that's not changing.
Okay, and even with Fire District One taking over responsibility?
Yeah, with Fire District One taking over the day-to-day operation, Fire District Two still owns the building, Fire District Two still owns the equipment, all the assets. You'll see really minimal changes, if any, other than cosmetic changes with a lot of the same faces and the same building with a different patch on.
All right.
And the staffing in that building is going to be enhanced on November 28th. There will be seven fire department personnel assigned to that building, one battalion chief, one captain, one lieutenant, four firefighters, one of which will be a certified paramedic 24/7. And then you'll have two paramedics with Johnson County Med Act operating the county ambulance. So, the fire department will be allowed or be able to operate what we call two heavies or two resources, plus the Johnson County Med Act ambulance, plus the battalion chief.
All right.
And that will begin on November 28th at 8:00 a.m.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
So, what you're essentially saying is the service should be expected to possibly even approve?
Hopefully, yes. And you will have, you know, our station at 191st and Lackman will close on the morning of November 28th when Overland Park's new facility opens. So, in the event that there is a call, a life-threatening call, or a significant fire, such as a structure fire, you could even get the Overland Park Resources, that'll be near 175th and Flum, will also come to the city, and you'll get a closer engine company as the next-in company to Spring Hill, now that their proximity will be over by Aubrey Bend Middle School, they'll be closer to the city.
Okay.
And with the county's automatic aid agreement in place, so any life-threatening, what we call a Code One call, if they're closest, they go, or a structure fire call, they'll go.
All right. Anybody else have any questions at all? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And the next one I had was on the number eight, the two failed wastewater pumps. Mr. Burton, do you want to handle that one, or? I guess what I had is, I wanted to find out, how many pumps does it take to operate?
So, there's three pumps in there. So, two pumps usually run, cycle on and off, and the third, of course, is for any type of high flow.
Okay.
What had happened, there's one pump- What had happened, there's one pump that was out for several years. Okay.
No, that was a difference. No, there was one that was going out. So, they pulled it to check on it, and they said, "Well, the other one..."
And the other.
"...is failing." So, they looked at both of them and discovered both of them were out. The one was making a lot of noise. They didn't realize it had burned up as well. They're both burned up.
So, they were burned up. So, right now, we just have one pump operating. We did order the pumps. We had considered an emergency order, but knowing that we had this council meeting coming up, and they're still four to six to nine to who knows how long out.
Okay.
So, we do have a plan in place, though, to relieve if the other pump goes out.
Right.
It's not a pretty plan, but it will work.
Okay.
So, most of it would go to the lagoons or something of that nature.
All right.
But the one was running. It was just that it was starting to make noise. And so, we decided to go ahead and pull it and prevent it.
It was non-operational, though.
Well, you had one that was seized up.
Yeah.
And you had one that you're saying is running. And then the windings were getting burned up. So, it wasn't like we had two not running. It was just kind of more of a preemptive thing because it was making the noise.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, it just, but to let you know, they're non-reparable, though. So, that's how far along they were.
Okay.
So... What's the life on those pumps typically?
Oh, I don't think we've changed anything since the plant opened. That'd be 27, 28 years ago.
That's a good life.
And really, having three of them in there, you know? And we're gonna do a little better job of cycling them and keeping everything going and run different ones and stuff like that, so.
All right.
And as you can see, it's in the amount. I don't remember exactly. It's 80 something.
Yep. Yep. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? We're good to go then. I'll take your motion.
We're leaving those on the...
Yes.
On the consent.
He was just asking.
Just asking a couple of questions.
Very good.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 500. This brings us to our formal action, which would be consider the approval of the appropriation order.
Move to approve the appropriation order 2021-10-18.
And this is...
10-28?
Yeah, 2021-10-28.
Mm-hmm. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right. Is this actually gonna be a roll call? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Roth?
I approve appropriation order number 2021-10-28, accepting that I partially abstain from voting on invoices pertaining to J and T Auto Service.
Motion passes 500.
All right. Now, the next one's from Mayor Ellis. Do we... Mr. Burton, or... Can you handle that one for us?
I didn't memorize all that. I'm sorry. First, I didn't get to say "good evening" and "thanks for everyone." It's kind of a messy night, and I know that we have Halloween costumes and all to do. And we must, you know, so... I remember those days. What this is, as we all know, unfortunately, our council is deciding to retire. Unfortunate for us, but very fortunate for him. And we always wish them, wish people well when they go. So, I hope that he gets to do what he wants to do now. In saying that, we have an engagement of professional service agreement with Chuck Dunley's law firm. And if it was all right, it's, MVP is the law firm.
Okay.
If it'd be all right, I would, Mr. Dudley, Chuck would be able to talk about it in conjunction with Frank.
Okay.
Okay, Chuck?
Sir.
I'll just leave this here. Contracts in there, Chuck.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Council President, members of the City Council. First, I think I should probably, I think this is probably a two-part action. As Council President indicated, there was an appointment from Mayor for the substitution of council, which is probably item one and item... The second item regarding that is the contract for the services. Specifically, just to reference a few items in that, and I don't want to overdo it. This is a very detailed contract. The contract was negotiated by my law firm, McInnany Van Cleven Phillips, with Mr. Jenkins. The contract provides for both the engagement, my engagement as city attorney, and provides some detailed list of some items that I will be, or that my firm will be responsible for providing to the city. I would like to point out to the council, there's one or two items that are new and are included at the recommendation of either the Chief of Police, as I understand, her request to the mayor, from Mr. Jenkins concerning items that he believes require future, need to be addressed, and from the city administrator as related to specific items that the city may not be, or hasn't done for a while. First and foremost, and not in any particular order, but one is that we will be providing services to the Spring Hill Police Department as legal advisor to the Spring Hill Police Department. I understand Chief is used to that from the city of Overland Park. I have, in fact, served in that role many years ago for the City of Kansas Police Department. And my CV, I'm not going to go through all of that. It's been provided to all of you. I have extensive experience in employment, civil rights litigation, and municipal liability. In addition, I, my firm, and most of the time this will be me, particularly on Section 3.1, but not always, will attend planning commission meetings. The city attorney attended planning commission meetings until the economic downturn of 2007, 2008 really hit us in 2008. But thereafter, did not as a cost savings. The city is obviously, as you are all aware, and certainly I'm sure proud, experiencing exponential growth and is going to face increasingly challenging issues. So, one of the items is, and Mr. Burton requested this. We were trying to figure out the timing. He said, "I think now is best." That to have the city attorney attend planning commission meetings, and those are once a month. I will also be attending, which Mr. Jenkins does currently, the city administrator's management team meetings. However, as the contract language indicates, it says "as directed." One of the things that I think we want to work out, and I think that Mr. Burton and Mr. Jenkins have worked on this, is whether it's necessary for the city attorney to attend every meeting or bi-weekly, or whether that should be by conference or for portion of the meeting. To best use your legal fees.
Mm-hmm.
But it also provides that opportunity. Now, the other reason that that's put in there, the city administrator could always say, always, or could also say, "I don't think that you need to attend these anymore." Or, "We're gonna communicate information another way." It's specifically listed here so that it's considered a regularly scheduled meeting. My firm committed that we will not bill the city for any legal fees for travel time or for mileage for any regularly scheduled meeting in the city of Spring Hill.
Okay.
Now, if I'm going to federal court for you...
Yeah.
That's a different matter if I'm... But for regularly scheduled meetings, we're not going to be doing that. I wanted to commit to that. The other item that I'd like to draw your attention to is Matter 3.2, which concerns the engagement of McInnany Van Cleven Phillips for duties above and beyond regular city attorney duties. When I presented, MVP presented our ability to provide services, one of the chief questions was, what's our bench? What's our ability to do other work? The city, for some time, has engaged other firms, including my own. For instance, for employment council and other matters. And one of the requests put from the mayor was, "How much of this can you handle?" Because consolidation of some of this work in one, with one firm, other than bond counsel, which Cootac Rack provides for virtually everyone in this area, and we don't provide. And you can't, and I can't beat bond counsel and city attorney. The other, and any conflicts which could arise. Other than that, to provide all legal services that we can, subject to the provisions here in it. So, this sets that up for that very purpose. The idea here is to reduce legal fees by limiting the amount of, the number of attorneys and firms involved. Finally, it outlines, the agreement outlines provision of our duties, city's duties. The rates, specifically, we would be billing by an hourly rate. We've quoted a single rate for all services. It's a very, which is a very good deal for the city of Spring Hill. And one of the things that McInnany Van Cleve and Phillips has done, and has done for quite some time, is we do charge, we serve municipalities and have since the turn of the century. And when I say the turn of the century, I mean 1901. One of the things that we do is charge lower fees in that area as part of our commitment to public service. Finally, there are detailed statements to be made. I will draw your attention to one section that we negotiated, or that we had to clarify some of the language. We have provided and laid out in Section 11 all of our insurance provisions and the willingness to provide certifications to the city and name the city as an insured on those policies in which the city can be named as an insured, which would be the commercial, general commercial liability and automobile coverage. We obviously can't do that for professional services or workers' compensation. And I stand for any questions that...
First, Mr. Owen, thanks for...
Sure.
Standing in for me. You were in good hands. Mr. Dunley, one of the things, and you may have already discussed this, when looking to appoint a new city attorney, one of the things that I was looking at was depth of bench to try and get away from appointing special counsel for specialty areas of the law. Did you discuss that?
I did discuss that briefly, that one of the goals was for, that we would be able to provide all of the city's legal needs other than bond counsel, and if there's a conflict. And specifically addressed that there are two sections in the legal services. Part of the agreement addressing city attorney services and the services outside of it so that we can move very fluidly without any change, and those will be at the same rates.
Right. And that is the other thing. Frequently, we have paid anywhere between $2.25 and I think as high, Mr. Jenkins, is $400 an hour for some specialty counsel.
Yes, sir.
So, at the $2.25 rate and locking that in for two years is, I think, going to yield some savings for the residents, so. Questions for Mr. Dunley?
Only question I have off the top of my head is on 3.2 and the definition for all those additional legal services, which is essentially the special counsel items, right? Is there anything between, outside of A through G, that would be potentially, anything that could come up for special counsel? Is there anything that we could... What would that be? I guess what I'm making sure of is, as we're talking, that we don't have to go to a special counsel. Is there anything potentially not on this list, I guess is what I'm asking?
Bond counsel and conflict.
So, the conflict, we wouldn't know, obviously.
So, the conflict of interest and bond counsel, okay? Those are the only two.
Conflict of interest. Every time that I open a matter, my firm opens a matter for the city of Spring Hill, we run a detailed conflict check. In the case of the city, I already know that I don't have conflicts. But with regard to any other parties, we run a detailed conflict check and then make a determination. From time to time, there are minor unrelated conflicts. In other words, a conflict that is very minor because I've, my firm has represented another party many years ago in an unrelated matter, in which case we'll seek a waiver. Sometimes there could be a conflict where we're providing services to another agency that the city is in conflict with and is either engaged in litigation or is entering into a contract with. It is not in any way necessarily adversarial, but if we're engaged in active representation of both parties, it would be inappropriate for us to negotiate the contract.
So, similar in nature to Item 6 for the conflict of interest waiver for the Quiktrick Corporation is kind of what you're discussing?
Sure. That would be...
A prime example.
A prime example. Okay.
With regard to other or neighboring municipalities, do you guys represent, does MVP represent, for example, Stillwell or Edgerton or Gardner, or anything of that nature, as you're representing us?
Yes. Yes. We represent multiple municipalities. Two things. One, we represent as city attorney or general counsel, Gardner, Merriam, and and Westwood. We also represent numerous other municipalities and local governmental entities, particularly in regard to either employment, civil rights, or municipal liability. So, it is not unusual for us to have, to represent certain other municipalities, particularly when it comes to law enforcement liability or employment matters.
That would bring to question then, if, how would it be handled if there's an annexation dispute between us and Gardner?
If there was an annexation dispute between you and Gardner, then both myself, then my firm would bow out of both. And no one from my firm, including myself, and no one from my firm, including Ryan Denk, would be representing or contributing to the representation of either city in that dispute. And we would, as our responsibility under this agreement, identify appropriate special counsel to handle the matter. We would likely seek a waiver for the very limited purpose of communicating back to you and knowing that limited information. But if that was not appropriate either, we would simply cut off all access to that information to either of us.
So, that would be a specific example of how we might need special counsel? I mean, perhaps. Yeah, just perhaps.
Right. Sure. Unified School District, Spring Hill. One of my partners represents the Unified School District, Spring Hill. One of my, one of my partners represents almost half the school districts in the eastern half of the state of Kansas. So, again, if there was a significant conflict, that would be the same.
Same. To be honest, I mean, there's, with the types of attorneys of what you're, we're dealing with on the municipality school districts, there's inevitably, I can't think that we can always rule out that there won't ever be any special counsel.
Right.
Because of the nature of the work.
Mm-hmm.
But I felt this approach would help us to minimize the appointment of special counsel and give us what I would consider to be rate stability.
For two years.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
For two years.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, rate stability as well, meaning across the bench. So that if we needed, for example, we needed counsel to litigate a 1983 claim, we don't have to worry about it being $350 or $400 an hour because we're not a regular client. So, unless there's a conflict, then MVP would be able to represent the city.
And MVP would charge 1983 rates, I think, right? And MVP would charge nineteen eighty-three rates, I think, right? That's a good question. You don't have to answer.
Yeah, not six nineteen eighty-three litigation. You get your two twenty-five an hour rather than the four fifty an hour. But, but I get your, the reference to the date, sorry, being a little bit too literal.
But this is a perpetual agreement based off of the termination. It's just that the rates will be held for two years.
The rates will be held in two years. And what it says is that, is that the parties will negotiate in good faith after two years to address the rates in light of the.
But that's, I was reading through the termination, that's how it would happen, right?
Right. Remember, at any point, the mayor with the consent of the council can replace any political appointee.
Correct.
So.
But that's just the intent is, is that this will be an ongoing. It's just that the, the contract doesn't end in two years. It's just that the rates would be negotiable at two years. And if we can't get to terms, then we would possibly have to go that.
Right, right. Yes, this is, the contract is ongoing. The, the rate negotiations are, just, we'll see if, what happens in, with negotiations and what rates are two years down the road. But the, the contract is ongoing, subject to the fact that the city can terminate it at any time. We are attorneys. Our client is the governing body and as a result, you can terminate it anytime. We can only terminate the contract upon ninety days written notice.
So if we go forward with the motion for this, do we need to have this in two part one to discontinue the services or?
No, Mr. Jenkins has, has already announced his retirement. We have to do the appointment of city attorney. And then, Mr. Jenkins, I think then we would take up adoption of the engagement agreement, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
At a later day?
No, today.
Okay.
Yes, two part, but the first would be the appointment, then the second would be the engagement agreement. Eleven and eleven A. So I just wanted to add, and I'm sure that Mr. Dunley had talked about this. He has been providing services to the city for, I think, about three years. We've worked together on a number of different issues. He's presented before the governing body before. And it is with great confidence that I propose the appointment of F. Charles Dunley as well as MVP as the city attorney effective November first, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. Now would entertain a motion to authorize me to sign the engagement letter with MVP Law Firm.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. For clarity, I think it was Mr. Eckert who got the second on that.
Negative.
Oh, it was Mr. Owen?
Mr. Owen.
I snuck in.
Ah, right under the wire.
I'd like to just take the opportunity, thank you all. I appreciate the faith that you have in me and my firm. And I am honored to serve the city of Spring Hill. In the time that I've worked here, I have, or worked for you as special counsel, I have come to take a great deal of ownership in that work. And it means a lot to me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunley. All right, next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fifteen. This is a rezoning, one hundred and ninety-first and one sixty-nine, law thirteen. Mr. Burton, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a rezoning of a piece of property. It's been submitted by L.J. Development. What this, it's at one hundred and ninety-first street and one sixty-nine highway or Madison Street runs up through there. And then also Webster also in that development there. The, originally, this piece of property was all zoned M one. And then at some time or another, they came in, there was a large development that was going to go there. It was actually a daycare facility. And so they went and rezoned all this. And then these types of businesses are coming back in that fall directly under the M one zoning. So at the planning commission meeting on October seventh, the planning commission conducted the public hearing. Staff presented the report, all the area was notified. Copies of the planning commission minutes are in there. There was, there was no, anyone that petitioned against it. And we still have not, at this point, received any petitions to not allow the rezoning or, or anybody filed a, where they didn't like it. So the alternative tonight is approve, deny or continuance. And it's ordinance twenty twenty-one fifteen. Any questions?
Move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, it's an ordinance, we'll vote by roll. It's a rezoning and we will vote by calling the role of the governing body, please.
Mr. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mayor Ellis?
Yes. Ordinance carries six zero zero. Next item is consideration of approval of access to property agreement. Mr. Burton?
Yes, thank you. So this is a property agreement with KDHE. It's called the Orphan Site Program. And what they're asking is to go onto the city property and look at and test and study the nitrates. If there was any leaching by the co-op, they just need an agreement of this sort to be able to allow them to do testing in all of our facilities.
So they don't have any preliminary analysis that shows that? They just want to have access to kind of determine if there has been?
And then they would supply a report to us and all on it. But they, it's a, it was a program set up, they go around. It's kind of like what they used to do or still do. You know, the hazardous waste on the old abandoned gas stations and things like that. And they like to, on this, test the area due to floating in the air and things of that nature. So they're going to test the whole area, but really just need access to our property.
They need to do some test wells in possibly?
I think with, when I spoke to him on the phone, he, he really had said that they'll start out with some light soil sampling.
Okay.
And then if it, if something, you know, it could grow beyond that. But he doesn't really feel like that far up that there's a problem. Because especially since, if you're aware of that area, it drains to the northeast.
Okay. And then if there was some type of contamination, then would that be potentially qualifying for the brownfields with the state of Kansas?
It, it will qualify for different types of cleanup through the orphans program, actually.
Through that program itself?
Has funds, it depends on how bad it is, but.
So the brownfield, okay.
Are they looking for a specific contaminant or?
Yes, they, they'll be concentrating on.
Nitrogen and ammonia.
Yes, nitrogen and ammonia in the soil and groundwater.
Would they? When would they become satisfied that no more testing needs to be taking place? How many, how many negative test results would it take?
Sure, I, well, I think what they'll do is they'll come in and they'll check it. And if there aren't, if there isn't anything that's abnormal, then that's it.
Oh, just, so just one test?
Yes, but if, if there's abnormal, then they'll go to the next phase of testing, which is, it's kind of like environmental lot at one, two and three. And they start out and if something comes up, then they'll go to the next.
The phase one to the phase two.
That's correct.
It's usually a step progression.
Correct.
And how did, how did this come about?
This, this program, they're going out and all the co-ops and centers that had permission to handle and distribute any type of fertilizers. And there's a lot of, especially a lot of them out west where they were not stored in internally. You know, they'd pile it all up and then cover it and break the crust off and do it. And so to answer your question, that's why this program was put into. There was no specific, to, to maybe read between the lines, there was no specific call in that some, that somebody complained and said, hey, we've got a problem out there, this is what the program does, so.
Move to approve the access to property agreement, assessment east hail and railroad avenue with, for access to the city parking lots with KDHE.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries five zero zero. This takes us to our one and only discussion item, purchase and implementation of a maintenance management work order system. Mr. Messer, you have the floor. Up here, please.
Good evening. I wanted to present to you, I was, the proposal to purchase a management software system. What this management software system would do, it would track public works, location of equipment, jobs, how long it takes. It's for data collection. We'll take, like this building, for instance, all the air conditioners, the HVAC equipment will be entered in. We'll develop a work order system, the filters will be changed now. Instead of, well, somebody changes them and it'll establish a routine and work order system to track what we do. We go out on the roads, we do asphalt work. Quite honestly, I can't tell you how many tons of asphalt we've used this year. I can't tell you exactly where every location is. It's just too broad of a subject without management software. This is a planning tool, a management tool. A year from now, after I get a year's worth of data, you can ask me how many hours we put on asphalt work. I can tell you what specific areas, I can tell you. The roads will be broken down into block sections. So it will help plan, help me plan what a standard is. It's just a, a tracking tool. It's just moving into a higher level of accountability. If somebody asks me what we've done on Wilson between Webster and Madison, I'll be able to pull it up. If we've done nothing and haven't done anything in that area, it'll show it. If we've been in there, it'll show it. The sewer plant will be, fall under it as well. Those pumps that we replaced, they will be entered into the system. We'll know how old they are. If we have to work on them, it'll be tracked in this system, any major repairs. There's equipment modules for vehicles. Right now, quite honestly, it's a little haphazard as to how we know when something is due. With this system, we'll be able to establish, an oil change is needed five thousand miles later, it'll automatically kick out a work order and send it to the box of the form and say, you need to service this piece of equipment. If we blow out the transmission in a truck, which we don't want to do, we can enter, this major work was done on it. So we have a record of what that truck or that car history is. So when we want to replace something, we can call up a record of what's happened to it. The reports, this section is one of the things I like about this. I've used this system before. And the thing that I like about it the most is if I want to, if I'm out in the field and I, well, the reports, I can create, I can customize a report. If I want to know how many hours we spent on changing filters in all the buildings, I can run a report and it'll tell us how much time we spent on it. How much time we spent on mowing Veterans Park? How much time we spent on maintaining the equipment, certain pieces of equipment? It's just a tracking system that gives us information for budget and other functions. The cost of this is thirteen thousand, uh, three, seven twenty-five. Part of that is it has a management, a mobile system. I can go, and, and I've always done it as I'm driving down the road, I come across a stop sign that's been knocked down. I can stop, take a picture of it on my phone, tag it to a work order and send it directly to somebody to write, to say, we need this done right now. I can call them by phone, but this is a documentation, especially if that sign's been knocked down twelve times. It's just a management tool to be able to increase the accountability. I'd like to know how many hours that the utility department, department has spent replacing water meters. I have no idea right now. This will track how many hours. How many hours do we spend in doing re-reads of meters? How many hours do we spend on certain wastewater functions? How many hours do we spend on doing the, uh, dewatering of the sludge? How many hours do we spend on working certain pieces of equipment? All it is, is taking, bringing in knowledge. So managers and, and you guys can say, I, I want to know how much time did you crack seal this year? How many hours did you use that crack seal machine? By having the guys track their time, they were out there for six hours and then they entered into the system, I can call up a report. This is how many hours. The cost of ownership of, of all sorts of operations is what I'm looking for. So.
Well, Mr. Messer and I, we sat in with, with this and I went through quite a bit with him on it. I tried to play stump. I almost did a couple of times. I mean, this, what this really is, is it's a sequel-based platform. It's really a database, which it's, it's listed here as a work order software system. It's really what's known in the industry, it's called a computer maintenance management system. Which is more of a, a long ways of saying it's asset management with the ability to assign all your activity. It's activity-based, but you use a work order to track them. And it's kind of a, when you, I, I spent several years in maintenance management and was fighting the same things that you were fighting. And there's a lot of things that you can do. It's, it's set up from talking with them to be the ability to do the modules with utilities. So that would be the sewer and the water, right? So we can pull and put all the pump information in there for the entire wastewater treatment plant. Also, down the road, if we have the ability, we could start putting in the segments of all the sewer line. That's way down the road. But to start off, we could potentially have our water utility billing software that has all the meters in it that we're billing, not the people's names, but the, the, the actual meter with the address be able to be downloaded in. So then if we need to sort it to see how many of them are new, old, when were they replaced, we actually have the ability to go through that and sort that by report. I was talking with Mr. Messer before this, in twenty sixteen, we have a pavement study that provides the pavement condition index. And that is all in a spreadsheet that would be able to be pushed into that. That has all the lane miles as of twenty sixteen. Maybe down the road, we would want to add on to the areas that haven't been touched and then we go back over it. But what it provides you is a quick look of what the condition is of all of our roads into lane miles. So you could go then and then start putting a hierarchy in. But also, you could start looking at work orders assigned to that section of road to start actually seeing, like he and I talked about. We did thirty-two work orders on this one segment of road, what's happening with it? Why do we have a bad subgrade, whatever? Do we need to start moving that up on the list or down, however we wanted to do that? Because like I ran the numbers yesterday. And we have what, ninety-six point five lane miles in twenty sixteen? If you were to just take the average road width of around twenty-six feet, divide that by two, that's thirteen. That gets you to around, what, six point five million square feet? And if you were just to take it to the level of using U-Bass over the entire system and running those numbers, you could really quickly say if it's six dollars and fifty- could really quickly say, if it's six dollars and fifty cents a square foot, which is probably pretty reasonable for what we spent on Webster, you're talking to, to put a like-new looking, but it wouldn't be like-new.
It wouldn't be new.
That would be forty-two million dollars. So what really, in that system, you could put in there is there's a ride condition index. And instead of looking at pavement and how it looks, what you want to be looking at is the ride condition index because your tires really don't care what it looks like. I mean, it may not be pretty, but that's where you could start using that payment condition index, ride condition index inside of that software to start putting it so that you could really start leveraging it for your five-year capital outlay. Another thing that we have the ability with this software is it will be able to be tied to our website with a link. So what would happen is you can have a citizen, they would hit the button, it creates a service request, not a work order. So for instance, somebody is driving down to 2030, it's outside of the city limits. We would review it and say, oh, no, we rejected it, but here's the reason why. If it's in the city limits or it's this here, then we accept it. It generates a work order that is now tracked and then we can communicate how that is being tracked to the individual, right?
Yes.
We can also do that internal. So if staff is walking along and one of the toilets has an issue, whatever, they can do an internal request for service request. We accept reject. And then that makes it so that staff can start seeing things that they might feel that need to occur. And so we, it's a real asset management tool. It's, and I'm going into a lot of detail on it because it says it's a maintenance management work order software system. And it's really, if you use the system properly and leverage it, it's more of an asset management tool. I mean, and they were developed for the purpose of, originally when the federal FHWA back in the, what, nineties started really start pushing that, then they started coming up with these CMMSs and after the PAS 55 of what Britain was doing. And then that's where this is all coming from. So if you really know how to leverage it, I mean, it's a, it's a very powerful tool to help with some of the things. And since we're still a moderately, you know, small, moderate-sized city, as we grow, if we start putting this into a CMMS, we don't have to stay with this CMMS forever, but it is very transferable in all the information. So if we just decide to change from Publix to another one because of our size, it gives us the ability. But sorry, I'm not trying to steal some.
No, no, I, I.
Show you all the things you can leverage out of this.
Yeah. And you can take, you have like a location. And what he's talking about drilling down, we could put the chairs in the, or not necessarily a chair, but you have different levels of items in the building that, again, give you cost of ownership for repairs. We're repairing too much. It'll tell me how many hours we spent mowing or which roads we need to concentrate on. It's got a lot of, and we can customize the work orders by adding blocks in there. Well, we really want to track this and it's not on the work order. Can we put some of these in there? Because this is what's unique to the area. So I've done, I did extensive research on this several times to find the right system. But I like this one because it's forward-thinking. I call it forward-thinking. I wasn't looking for a record-keeping system because I want something that I can project work as well. We know that one unit's given us a lot of trouble. We need to watch it. We need to start routine maintenance. Yeah. So anyway, I don't know if we have any questions.
Is this customizable at all?
Yes.
Okay. A couple of things that I think are important to our residents and also important to the council to be able to better manage resources. Will it be able to track, for example, mean time to repair? A work order is issued. How long did it take us from the time the work order was issued till the time the problem was solved?
It has a system in there that you can assign a priority. It's a low priority. We got a, a work order that we need to mow this such-and-such area where we're working asphalt, but it will give you a reminder. It'll pop up. You say, okay, we want to do this one the next seven days. It'll come back and with a reminder and reissue it. Or, or you could run a report. How many have not been completed?
Okay.
And it will give you that.
Okay. That takes me to the two other things, what we would call a touch report and what we would call escalation. So if a, if a resident had opened a work order and it was issued a low priority, are they getting a message back that says, we'll have this addressed within seven days?
Yeah. We'll have the administrative clerk be the go-between on those calls and we'll respond and reach out if, if, you know, we'll work that into it. Yes.
And then is there, can the system escalate if a work order is not being completed in the prescribed time or what we would call the service level to the supervisor and then to you?
Yes.
Okay. I think all of those are very important because I think all of us have probably received telephone calls about whether it be potholes. I know we get calls also about street lights out, but.
Yes.
And obviously that's a power, or not power and light anymore, evergy issue. But we still get those calls and we still want to be able to provide a service. So what then is there, is there an automated follow-up once the ticket's closed to the person who initiated it?
I don't know. I don't.
Okay.
Think, I believe there, I mean, once it's closed, I don't think it reports back to the people, but we probably could work something like that.
Some of them have that capability?
I've never used it, so I don't know.
Okay. Closing the follow-up loop is another area where we struggle. So I, I think that would be important as well.
Yeah. I've been finding out, just a simple phone call back to people means a lot.
Absolutely. Last question for you, Mr. Messer. And you had mentioned wastewater and you had mentioned water. Is this divided equally among the two utilities and Public Works?
Yeah. It'll be divided between all of them. Yes.
Divided equally?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So forty-five, seventy-five to the each utility and then to the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was the initial cost was thirteen, seven twenty-five. Is there a recurring yearly license fees or?
I think it's nine hundred, I think is what it was.
I have the old one. So.
Pardon?
I have the old one in front of me. The one that we had. I love hitting that microphone sometimes.
This is the latest quote.
Is that the latest one?
Yeah. We ran into trouble with it because we were trying to match it up to IT.
Okay.
To make sure which way to go. But I do have copies of those if I could.
You have copies for everybody up here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a copy for the clerk as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that reoccurring yearly license fee was nine hundred. Is that what?
I'd have to look it up.
I think that's what it was.
Actually, you have the nine hundred for the hosting.
Hosting fee. I'm sorry. You're right.
But then the ASM, it depends on how you want to do it. It has the thirty-six, forty-five, which includes the nine hundred. And so it depends on how you want it to go about handling that. I don't think we have to actually do the thirty-six, forty-five, but you do have to do the nine hundred, I believe is what it is. Yeah, this is the old one.
Are there other municipalities using this system or a like system?
Yes. Reno, he uses it. Reno County.
Jackson, Jackson County does too.
Riley.
Missouri, sorry.
I've heard Bourbon County is getting ready to go to it. Lynn County uses it. Like I said, I was ver, it was very successful down there for me. I, I looked at a lot of them. I looked at CIC. I looked at, there was about a half a dozen I looked at. But I said, I liked the way this one looks forward. That was my big point. If I find a problem, I want to be able to write work orders for it. Most of the systems, what you did, not what you need to do, was same, the main thrust of a lot of them. Leavenworth County, Reno, Lynn, to name a few that uses it. Riley.
He said Jackson when we were on the phone, I believe.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, that's right.
Um, what was it I going to say about this? Escaped me. It's the tip of my tongue. Oh, I, I think one of the things it's going to have to understand is, is that you won't really, you will start leveraging it in the work order process for his daily management in about the first year. It will take a period of time to where you're really starting to leverage the CMMS, probably closer to one to two years because what has happened is all these spreadsheets with information that are sitting out on somebody's computer, like that pavement condition study that I found last night, so late in the morning, but you finally got it too, is that information can get put in and, but then you have to add and amend it. The biggest thing for asset management is to, first of all, go through your entire system of all the utilities, whatever, and then document what you have. And then to also then to put a condition to it. That is a lot harder, a lot easier said than done. So that's the one thing I would, you know, I'm not going to be here next year. But in doing this, when I did maintenance management on a forty-acre manufacturing facility, it's a lot easier said than done to get all those pieces of equipment, all the AC, every air conditioning unit with all of its parts list put in. Because you can have it set up so that the vendors are set up in there. Eventually down the road, he and I were talking, he came here and he didn't know what filters he needed. The way the system is set up is, is that when it generates the work order, it will also generate the parts list, although the filters of what you are doing, and then also have the ability for it to, if you have it set up with the system and they're an authorized vendor way down the road, not only will it do it, it'll also order them for you. So then you have your people have those things for them. When they go, well, I don't know if I can get it done. Well, well, here's the filters.
That's where they came from. This is the size. Also, the thing I did forget to mention.
Just a second. Mr. Messer, Mr. Peterman?
Yeah, that, part of that was what I had a question on. Will that order the filters? Keep track if you buy four hundred filters. It will let you know that you have four.
It will have an, it does have an.
It has the capability.
Create an inventory list so you have an inventory of all your tools.
It has a capability of doing that, but to understand how much time and effort it's going to take, it will be several years before you really start leveraging it because there's a lot of granularity you can put into this. Really what you need to start setting up is the parent-child, so there's, you know, this is the parent, this is the child, and the child, and the child. It's going to take just time, just setting up. I have a flight pump and I have three flight pumps. This is the manufacturer. This is the serial number. This is the condition on it. Before you even get to, you know, the impeller or this or that, that's a specific piece on it for the windings. I mean, that's, you got to start with the parent and the major pieces of equipment and then you start getting into granularity of that, which then takes more and more time. But as they do work orders, then some of that information will start being put into the system because when he issues a work order and says, go work on the flight pumps, one of the things that they need to do or they should be doing, and I feel very confident with Mr. Messer, is he'll say, if there's not information in there, put it in, right? So then that they start doing this, as they do the work order, then they start putting that in there. Same thing with water meters. When they go start checking water meters, you know, they can look on their phone because all of the people that are in the field will be able to use their city phone for this. So what will happen is they can look at that water meter and make sure, one, that the scale on the water meter is correct and not off by point oh one or, you know, whatever it is, to make sure that we're not underbilling or whatever. But, you know, is it reading right, whatever? And then if it's not reading right, whatever, we need to replace it. Then we can put a work order in and also request and start doing that. And it'll start putting that information as they go.
I was just looking at the fact that if you got inventory of tools and stuff and you got six guys going to the job, but you only got three shovels, you know, we could have sent three guys somewhere else. I mean, so it saves the city money that way.
And another thing that it has that I didn't mention was the mapping. It will tie into our mapping system.
Yeah. We had that specific question. Could we tie that into the, what is it?
Ames.
Ames, Ames system. So could we pull information from Ames in and then merge it in? And the answer was yes. I mean, there's a lot to do. The problem is, is having the people and the staff to put all that information. It's just going to take time. When you look at the amount of lines, like when I went through the pavement study that was done in 2016, there was probably, you saw, did you see it?
I hadn't seen it yet.
I think, I could pull it up, but there was probably ten to fifteen pages of, not more, of spreadsheets with several hundred lines on them.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, when you talk about ninety-six point five lane miles and they're broken up by segment and length and pavement condition and everything that goes with it, there's a lot of information. Because as you put it in, you also need to be checking the information to make sure you're not putting bad stuff in too.
And you would go back in, once you downloaded that, you would go back in for Webster, for example, and you would update that it was, this was done to it between this section and this section. And then you can create a, well, we say that seven years from now that maybe U-Bass might be, have to be refreshed. It will bring that. What projects do I need to do next year? It will pop those up. This is what you need to look at. This is what you need to plan for. So.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Messer?
Hmm.
Yes, sir.
I just had a question about cost of training to train individuals.
That's included in it.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell.
Thank you.
On that note, the most critical piece about that for training is actually having a strong leader that knows how to use the software and apply it. And Mr. Messer has experience with it and he's been showing a lot of leadership from what I've seen with the Public Works Department. So that's the biggest driving force.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on to announcements and reports. There are a few things to talk about. The first is, is what was initially reported as a potential water loss issue. In a conversation that I had with Mr. Burton earlier this week, it sounds like we may have a substantial water loss issue in our water utility. And as such, and as such, I know that Mr. Burton continues to work on identifying the issue. There may be some other underlying issues. And I'm going to ask you to provide an update on that, Mr. Burton. And I'm going to ask you to make certain that we have another update at the meeting in November. I'd also like you to provide an update on QuickTrip for us, if you would, so that everybody knows what's happening. Chief Henson?
Chief, I had a voicemail from a resident today. We exchanged messages. The resident talked about regularly, this week in particular, seeing the crossing, one of the crossing guards almost get hit by a car and expressed concern about visibility of police officers along Webster at the elementary school. And my message back, I had indicated that I know that we've had trouble hiring some crossing guards and I know that police officers have been filling that role, which certainly reduces the visibility and ability to patrol. But I had indicated that I would raise this issue on her behalf and certainly on behalf of the crossing guards. If we could do our best to increase presence along Webster, I know that everybody would appreciate that. I know we have talked about the apartment project, the Greg Prebe, the seven hundred and fifty unit apartment project periodically over the course of this year. I know that we had experienced issues getting started on that because there were concerns about being able to get materials. I believe that there are still concerns about being able to hire enough people to work on the job, et cetera. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Burton, they do still wish to move forward with that project. They've just not scheduled when they're going to turn dirt. Okay. Lastly, Tuesday is election day. There are three very qualified candidates for mayor. There are five very qualified candidates for city council. Not everybody is going to be happy with how the election goes. Social media isn't necessarily the place to attack one another. You don't get taller by knocking other people down. I know it seems like it should be easy to be a graceful loser or a graceful winner. It isn't always. And remember, no matter what happens, there are human beings behind this. And everybody deserves to be treated with respect. I pass a house on my way into work and the family had made a sign that they posted at the end of their driveway. And all it says is be kind. And I think that's a pretty good reminder every time I leave the house in the morning. So I know that it gets. So I know that it gets, I know that it gets tough. I know that everybody's out there fighting for votes. Continue to do that. The community benefits from lots of people engaging in the process. But remember, at the end of the day, we need to rally around who wins and ensure that they are supported. Uh, Mr. Owen?
Uh, Mayor, I was gonna bring up something that I talked about and I figured I'll do it anyway here. Um, my concerns about the water department because I did some checking on it. After following the water department for on monthly financial reports, I decided I needed to learn more about the operation of this department. Towards the end of July, I asked Mr. Burton for reports that would show me the water consumption and rate code structure. Give a little background on it. On August fourth, August fourth, Mr. Burton sent me a copy of the July consumption report, a copy of the Spring Hill Municipal Water Use Report for twenty twenty-one and year to date for twenty twenty and then year to date for twenty twenty-one through July. On August sixth, I acknowledged the receipt of these reports and asked about the reports prior to twenty twenty and expressed I was concerned for seeing on the water reports for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. That stood out was unaccounted for water for the year twenty twenty. As reported to the state was twenty-two million eight hundred and forty thousand gallons of water. This unaccounted water represented fourteen percent of the water purchased by the city in twenty twenty. Um, the twenty-one year to date through July looks as if we were on track to at least reach the twenty million gallon mark of unaccounted water for the year's end. I did not receive any additional reports that I requested the entire month of August, but I knew the interim city administrator, new financial directors were busy trying to get our budget done.
Certainly.
So understood the delay there. The water reports I have for twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen were obtained directly from the state of Kansas. Looking at these reports, extremely high numbers of unaccounted water was not a new issue for the city. Uh, a little background, water use summer reports to the state. In twenty fifteen, it was sixteen million forty-five thousand gallons of unaccounted water. That represented eleven percent of the total purchased by the city. Sixteen, it was thirty million three hundred and eight thousand gallons of unaccounted water. Eighteen percent of total water purchased by the city. Seventeen, it was thirteen million five hundred and forty-five thousand gallons of unaccounted water, nine percent of the total water purchased. Eighteen, twenty-four million nine nine ninety-six thousand gallons of unaccounted water, fourteen percent. Nineteen, it was twenty million three hundred and thirty-six thousand gallons of unaccounted water, twelve percent. Twenty twenty, it was twenty-two million eight hundred and forty thousand gallons of unaccounted water, fourteen percent. In January of twenty-one, January through September, I received an updated report. We were at fifteen million three hundred and fifty-nine thousand gallons of unaccounted water. That was twelve point four percent of the water purchased for twenty-one. My research into unaccounted water for other departments indicates that a three to four percent uh, per year may be acceptable, the number of loss, but they would carefully monitor at that point. If you just took the reports in the year of twenty nineteen, in addition to the twenty million three hundred and sixty, three hundred and thirty-six thousand gallons of unaccounted for water, the numbers reported to state indicated that seven out of eight months, the city sold more water than it purchased. I brought this to Mr. Burton's attention. City staff researched the numbers and updated the report. I have not seen any of the paperwork that they used to correct the report. It no longer shows the city sold more water than it purchased. It no longer shows a twenty million three hundred and thirty-six thousand gallon of unaccounted for water. It now shows forty-four million twenty thousand gallons of unaccounted water. This corrected report says the unaccounted water for the, the unaccount for water represents a twenty-five point seven percent of the water purchased in nineteen. After reviewing these reports, I discussed my findings and concerns with Mr. Burton and asked how no one ever, over the, over the past six years, has not questioned these numbers. Mr. Burton had took the issue to the mayor, who said he was aware of the numbers for several years.
Was not aware of the numbers. I was told in June of this year that we were investigating a water loss issue. When Mr. Burton took over, I asked him to continue to investigate that. There was one concern that we thought it might have been or had hoped anyway, that it might have been the issue on two hundred and seventh outside of the fire station. We worked on that. That was not it. It wasn't until this week that I heard these numbers.
And the, uh, to direct former and city employee Jim Hennesshot and Melanie Lance to investigate. Mr. M- Burton and Mr. Messer have begun digging into the unaccountable water issue, which I think have caused him a great deal of work. I believe what they are finding needs to be explained to the council and to the citizens of Spring Hill. Identifying the unaccounted water is just the beginning. This does not even address how this affects the city's water customers and it does not even address the wastewater loss because we count wastewater with the water. So that's where I have my stuff. I think Mr. Burton had more information to, to bring up.
I'm gonna ask you to continue to work with Mr. Burton on this. And, um, again, Mr. Burton, we're gonna be looking for a comprehensive update at the next council meeting in November, okay? Anything else, Mr. Owen?
Nope.
All right. Mr. Leighton?
Um, one of the comments was, was how no one paid attention to that. That's actually an inaccurate thing. Council has been trying to track some of this down. I think that part of the issue has is that we did not have some of the best, you know, information coming in from staff at times in the years previously. Um, very good, some of the things they did, but this is not one of their strengths. This was a question that I've been asking and trying to figure out and get to drill down to what our losses were for a long time and talking with the public works directors. Um, it's a very difficult thing to get them to give us information that sometimes I've been pushing for. I did my own rate study of the entire utility back in like twenty-ten to twenty-eleven. It did show that we did have more than usual, um, losses in the system. But we're trying to progress. That's why we started doing the water meter program to try to get it so that we could start tracking it through the water meters. Um, and then it's, there's a whole thing that goes behind it. That's why there's a value with having like the management system for the CMMS. Because then it has more better information that is being put into it. So, um, the segment that it hasn't been looked at and hasn't been pushed on, I think is an inaccuracy. Um, but then one of the other things is, is that, uh, one and another subject is, uh, Webster, the, the intersection. Um, I think we have it partially striped, but can we get the rest of the inter- intersection where it's faded? Um, kind of refreshed in that area? Now that we're done with construction, some of that's faded in that area at two hundred and fifteen. It would help if I tell you what intersection, not the whole thing.
Webster's long.
Yeah, I was like, wow, my wife would have barked, now slap me. Um, can you tell me some more specifics with your grievance? Um, so, uh, at two hundred and fifteenth street, um, where we end the pavement, um, if we can kind of get some refreshing of the pavement on all sides, uh, that would be good. So.
All right, there's anything else?
No, I think just to, I'm gonna tag on it. Um, how I will say it, you say be kind with what's happening with everything. My statement would be is, is that you have to look at everybody up here is, is that they're your neighbor and remember that. So that's how you should be looking at it is, is that when it's all said and done, we're neighbors. So it's not just about being kind. It's, it's beyond that. It's about being good neighbors to one another and to remember that. So that's all I would say on that. This is right there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hacker?
Yes, I would like to say a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Jenkins for your service to the city, uh, as the council. Uh, it's been a long time. How long, how long have you served in that position?
Thirty-four years.
Wowza. Yeah.
Also served as city prosecutor before as well.
I did not.
Actually, also a former, um, a former city prosecutor is an appellate court judge. Is he still on the bench?
He retired. Steve Joe, Joe Parent.
Okay. So, so with, Mr. Jenkins has been in, um, very good company in that role.
Very good.
We will be planning a more appropriate appreciation. I'm gonna, we'll work with Ashley. We'd like to have a luncheon. Um, and then the council, of course, would be invited to that.
Very good. Uh, also, it's, it's been a recurring theme on the codes. Are, are, are we needing, how will we, how will we go about starting to get underway of reviewing the codes? How long has it been since we reviewed the codes? That is some food for thought because that's, again, that seems to be a recurring issue. And I want to make sure they are appropriate for the citizens that they're serving. Um, as far as, uh, as codes administrators, you know, five and four years or whatever the number is. But I, I think that's just the nature of the beast when it comes to that type of position. I think it's a hard position to fill and to keep someone maintained in that position. So, but I do think it would serve us well to at least visit that, um, to get an idea of how we can better serve our citizens. So, uh, that, that is it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Graves?
Uh, no reports.
Ms. Roth?
Uh, I just wanted to say I was excited to hear about the software that, uh, Mr. Master was describing. I have a similar software at my business and it really, uh, has been a game changer regarding being able to track, uh, like you said, some of the pros were not just document what was done, but to proactively look forward to see what needs to be done. Um, I'm a big proponent for, uh, a little bit of preventative, preventative maintenance goes a long way. Um, and just efficiency. It's, it's huge with software, uh, management systems that can do that for you and help every aspect of those departments that get to take advantage of that software. So that's very exciting. Um, and hopefully that'll get implemented soon. Uh, and I absolutely can attest to the time that it takes to implement all the information. You have to get the data first, then you can start proactively looking forward. Um, so hopefully we'll all be patient with that, but that's very exciting. Uh, and yeah, just sentiment that, uh, October is respect life month and that doesn't necessarily, uh, always point towards, um, what people think it does. It's also the living lives. So just respect all life.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Burton?
Okay, thank you. Um, still very busy. A lot of plats going through the, one of the plats that went through tonight. Um, might not be aware, it's a fifteen, seventeen year old plat that is right, uh, adjoining the aquatic center. So it's in our water district also, uh, a local, a couple of local guys owned it. Um, and, uh, Grotta bought it and it was a, it's a good deal. Um, I think that not only puts more meters in our area, but it also starts filling in that entire area along with Oakwood. So that's good. QuickTrip, we gave them, uh, they finally came in and asked for, uh, the amount that they owed on their permits. So I'm working with them. We look for them to start. Well, we, it was gonna be a few weeks, but if it doesn't stop raining, but they are going to pick up their permit here shortly.
If we were delayed, there was some concern between KDOT and QuickTrip that was escalated to me and I reached out to Representative Thomas, who is instrumental in helping us to resolve that hurdle with KDOT. So I want to thank him and Mr. Burton, thank you for bringing the issue to me.
And thank you for doing that, uh, because, because it was, it was issue that could be resolved fairly easy, but it was also an issue that, uh, had to be resolved for them to build there. So, so it was a pretty serious issue in our eyes in getting QuickTrip. The apartment complex, I actually, uh, Mr. Preeb's attorney reached out to me this week. Uh, we're gonna talk, uh, mostly it has to do with, uh, IRBs for tax exemption. So, so hopefully we can get that project.
And you're referring to an IRB tax exemption for sales tax on materials purchase?
I just figured everyone knew, so.
Not everybody watching may understand that. We're not talking about abating taxes on the property.
Right, no. It is strictly for the sales tax that would be paid on the materials only.
Construction materials.
Construction materials, that's correct. So, uh, and then across the street where the old farmhouse is, it's not in the city. It, uh, joins the glass plant there. Uh, we're working with that ownership now. Uh, we think that we'll be able to annex that shortly. Uh, we're, we're looking at some diff- different options on that, so I might as well just go ahead and. So to help our water situations out, we have to grow our water system. Uh, you know, it's been presented, uh, to several different system owners. And there's, so that is, peace is right against the glass plant. And we have water right there. So we're gonna work out a way on, we will, uh, we will ask the council if we could give notification to, uh, the water department that has that and ask that we could serve that property. So just so you know, that's gonna be a good development there as well. Um.
Can you talk about what the potential zoning for that property?
Sure. It, there's three different zonings to it. There's apartments, well, they're all, uh, RP four, RP three, and then RP one. So you're, there'll be apartments, the way it looks right now, um, townhomes, duplex, combination, and then residential will back up to residential.
You mean, single family?
Single family.
They're all residential.
Yep, I'm struggling tonight.
All right. That's all right.
But it will have a little bit more density to it.
It'll have a lot.
Normal development.
That's correct.
But you're saying that the single family backs up to the single, existing single.
That's correct. So, and that's how we're trying to work it through. Well, uh, the water loss update. I think that everyone knows me that I just straight out and tackle things head on. We looked at, uh, when we were doing budget, uh, presented some questions to Luann. Uh, you know, there was some real big inconsistencies in just simple mathematics, because it has to be if I do it, okay? So going through it, uh, water loss, you know, we're talking about really, really significant water losses. And we're talking about a lot of money. But we understand what the problems are now. We are taking immediate corrective action, meaning we have, we will, and maybe today started, uh, putting four and five employees on it. Um, it's, it is a serious situation. We, it's not that we are in trouble by any means and all financially, the city's fine. It's just that we had a lot of, um, complacency maybe in a situation where, um, you know, that they understood that there was a problem. Actually, another water company actually reached out to us um, in sixteen, two thousand and sixteen. But, um, you know, sometimes it's easy, easier to just maybe let the problem go on if you don't really know what the answer is. I don't think that it was, it, it wasn't intentional. I think that we're also looking at a problem that we face in, I face with staff is proper training. Uh, when you look at something, you have to understand if you're working on that or if you are putting it in a computer or any, you have to understand. And by not understanding multipliers for meters, because these big meters can't spin that fast. So it reduces it and then you mul- add a multiplier to it. Um, and then in the system, this multiplier has to be correct. So we really weren't losing any water as far as broken lines. There were a couple, you know, and there's some water usage out of hydrant meters and things like that. And we had a couple of meters broke. But to just give you an idea, we had a facility that there's no doubt people are using it every day except in the summer. Uh, so that will tell you the facility. Um, and it, it just continued to read zero. And it, it just continued to read zero. So, you know, it, it, we are correcting those areas and that's all, you know.
Mr. Burton.
I don't know what else to say, you guys. We, we, we're tackling it head-on, um, and it's what we're gonna work on.
The problem is resolved, then we need to conduct what's called an after-action review. We need to identify the root cause. You have mentioned what may be some contributing factors, whether they're the root cause or not, we don't know yet.
No.
And then what irreversible corrective action will be implemented. Irreversible corrective action may mean, for example, these reports coming to the council every month, so that there is more visibility into it. So that is, that is what I would like to see if we get to that point before January tenth. After January tenth, then the next mayor can issue whatever directive.
We, we will have reports out. Um, we're working through it daily. And then to asthreat the whole problem is parts, meters, you know, and it's tough. It's, it's a tough deal. We'll get you a full report. I, um, hadn't prepared anything yet. We're all three of, well, ev, all staff is still working on it, um, and making the corrective measures where we can. Keeping track of it will let you know what it is, so.
I wanted to compliment, uh, Mr. Burton. He's been very helpful in me doing my research and, and very quick to get information. Excellent. I want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you. So, um, and then, so we'll get a report out, you know. I, it, I'll have to do some thinking on it and, you know, I'll make sure that all the points are, but we will make sure that you understand what actions we're taking, where the checks and balances will be from now on, and using the new software that we have properly, in my mind, properly, or at least using it, so. Okay, then we were talking about codes, Mr. Eckert. Um, we are right now working on the, uh, building codes in conjunction with Miami County and all. Will's doing a lot of that, uh, under my supervision, obviously. So hopefully what we're trying to do is make sure that it's gonna be more uniform with everyone. Now, when we're talking about codes as, um, Mr. Boswell's talking about, we have been updating those frequently, not frequently, but along the way. Uh, an example of updating it was the golf carts. That falls into the whole code realm and looking at it. We have a, a officer now that does his job. And, you know, you, he's gonna rub people the wrong way and, you know, they, um, they, it's not notifications. We go through the process. We do everything according to the process. And if it doesn't happen, then we take care, we take action on it now. And there's been a lot of action that has taken place, very little complaints. I mean, I don't know how many cars we've towed. Lots. New ones, old ones? So, you know, we, he's doing a good job on that and, and we haven't had that many complaints. I, I don't know if you guys have, but if you do, please just forward them to me.
Well, one of the other things too, Mr. Burton and I have talked about is, is, is making certain that our code enforcement officer also has some additional tools available to him. So if it's a matter of, uh, finances or a matter of mobility for a resident, that we can get them information as to organizations that may be able to help them.
Yes. And we do have some churches already lined. Um, and we're not talking about things of that nature like painting. He doesn't go write tickets to paint houses.
Right.
It's obvious problems is what he's working on. Um, so, uh, Mr. Boswell, I did reach out to him, just so you know, that's a follow-up from the last meeting or the meeting before. Unfortunately, I was not able to talk to the homeowner because of a situation that happened with her husband. So, um, is now deceased. So we, I feel sorry for her and hope and pray that everything's good for her, so. Um, I do want to thank everybody, um, for, you know, understanding that we're just plowing through stuff and that the help that's given in nudging us one way or another, um, by everyone. Mr. Owen reaches out a lot to, uh, us on making sure reports are correct. The mayor listens to me. Um, sometimes I don't think he wants to, but he does, so.
Never true.
But that's, that's about all I have, unless you have additional questions for me.
Thank you very much.
The only question, you, you reviewing the building codes?
Yes, sir.
Which code series?
Uh, I believe he's doing the eighteen.
Twenty eighteen? Is he gonna adopt, are we gonna adopt the IECV, uh, International Existing Building Code?
Right. We are gonna go ICC codes, um, and that's, this area, the whole area, that's what they do. I think the county went ahead and went with, uh, twenty-one, uh, Johnson County. So, but we're working on the eighteen. What's, what, it won't be a big change anyway, because really, all the builders that, or a lot of the builders that build, here, building a Latha and Gardner and all, and they've already changed their codes. So we go out to do an inspection and most all the code updates that are coming out are already in there, already being built, just because, you know, the, the roughing crews or the HVAC crews are used to it, so.
But the IE, the reason why I was asking is it's for existing buildings. It would be good to get that adopted in.
Yes.
It's existing, so alterations, modifications, things like that would fall underneath that.
Right.
Um, so I think that you might want to evaluate and make sure that.
And actually, that's one part I'm doing, um, because of the downtown area, um, especially with, uh, the handicap requirements. So that will be adopted and that will keep us up to date where, and, and old buildings like that, door swing, where they may have to swing out, they're allowed to continue to swing in.
That's in the historic section, but there's also sections in there that basically say, if it's no more than fifteen percent of the structural system in this direction, this direction, there's a damage to it you can replace in kind. The percentage might actually be different than what it's actually saying. But the point is, is it allows, like, if you are in the old downtown or existing structure, that you don't have to bring it up to the building, depending on what the parameters are. That's why I was saying that the IE, International Existing Building Code, IECV. I always like to transpose.
I, I, I have some pretty good common sense and work with people on that anyway.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Burton. Adam Clark.
Yes, I just want to, um, thank Mr. Jenkins for all your expertise and assistance throughout the years. You made me a better clerk and I appreciate your assistant Natalie, who's, has been a pleasure to work with, and I do wish you all the best in your retirement.
Ms. Armstrong.
No reports.
All right. Mr. Messer.
I did add up a couple of things. I wanted an update on, update on U-Bass a little bit. We're getting close to that project's completion. They're gonna be laying out the turn lanes and the arrows first and next week. The wind, rain ran them off. They're, we're gonna be doing it today. Um, and we're gonna be turning to start track sealing roads here in the next couple of weeks, as well as getting ready for snow.
All right. Very good. Snow next week? I heard that. I don't even wanna hear that. Chief Henson.
I'm going to update you guys on our third quarter quarterly report. Um, since the last report, uh, we have hired, uh, three officers. Uh, Officer Gutierrez, Officer Johnson, and Officer McGill. Uh, Officer McGill is in the academy and is set to graduate mid-December. Uh, Officer Gutierrez, uh, Officer Johnson are currently in the field training program, as well as Officer Tallman, who had, um, graduated, went to the academy during the summer. Two of them are scheduled to get out solo by mid-December and, uh, Officer Gutierrez will come out mid-January. Um, we also have an officer that has completed the background and is scheduled for the final two steps. Uh, if everything works out, we'll have a tentative start date for him sometime mid-December as well. Um, that's very exciting, uh, that we will have, I always hesitate to say this because then something drops, um, is, uh, we will have all of our officer positions filled, um, by that point. Uh, by spring of next year, we will have them all in solo, um, status, which is huge. It's really gonna be good. Um, let's see, we, uh, we have. Issuing out the Living in Value Awards there, so I don't want to tip my hat in case any of them are listening, which I doubt they are, but I don't want to tell them that they're getting awards on Monday. Um, we have some upcoming events, uh, Spooktacular. We're gonna be participating in that on Friday. Also trunk and treat, trunk or treat on Sunday night with the Spring Hill Baptist Church. And we are continually participating in the Good Deed Program in partnership with Pop Suites, where if we see somebody doing something good, we're giving them a, an ice cream cone. Um, so I think we've, uh, I've, I've tasked, I've asked my officers to look a little harder. We've only been able to issue out three ice cream cones, so we need to, uh, we need to do a little better job.
Didn't hear you say anybody up here got one.
Yeah, well, you know, it's just for kids. No, it's not just for kids. There's an adult who got one too. Um, so with regard to our, uh, statistics, um, as you know, we have several priorities. One is crime. First priority is crime, is to maintain and reduce our crime by supporting crime-reducing objectives and goals. Uh, high visibility with traffic stops, citizen contacts, and quality investigations. Uh, so far for calls for service, uh, through, and this is through the end of September, uh, we've had five thousand eight hundred and seventy-two. Um, that is, uh, almost a thousand more than we had this time last year. Our, uh, response time is, uh, just a little bit over three minutes, three minutes and twenty-seven seconds. Uh, that is about thirty seconds longer than it was last year in two thousand and twenty. And I think I referenced this before, as with two thousand and twenty, we didn't have as many calls and therefore we were able to respond just a little bit quicker. Assaults and batteries are up, um, just slightly, uh, seven this year to date compared to five last year. Uh, batteries are also up, and this is very consistent with what's happening across the board with COVID and, uh, domestic violence is increasing. Auto crimes, including auto burglary and auto theft. Auto burglary, um, we are down from last year this time. However, we did have a, a rash of them occur on, uh, earlier this week. Can't remember now which day it was. Um, auto thefts, we are also down in comparison to last year. Uh, however, we were also, we had three cars stolen that same night that we had some burglaries. Um, I would ask that everybody please take their keys in with them.
And lock your car.
And lock your car. Uh, all of those, uh, cases we had were unlocked vehicles and keys left in cars. Uh, we've had a slight increase in burglaries, um, ten compared to eight last year. And our reports are significantly up from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. We've, uh, we've had a seven hundred and nineteen compared to four hundred and twelve the year before. Uh, the other, one of our objectives is traffic safety. Um, unfortunately, we did have a fatality this year, uh, and we had zero last year. And, and I expect that these would be going up as far as our accidents, because we have cars back out on the road. Injuries have also gone up. Uh, we've had ten this year compared to seven the year before, non-injuries. We've had sixty-two compared to forty-five. Uh, alcohol-related accidents, however, are down, which is good, uh, one compared to five. DUI enforcement is up. Should be a correlation. Uh, we've had thirty-one DUI, uh, arrests compared to twenty-one the year before. Traffic activity is also up, sixteen hu, uh, one thousand six hundred and seventeen incidents compared to one thousand two hundred and thirty. Citations are slightly down, um, and traffic stops, I, I can, I cannot compare them to two thousand and twenty, but we have eight hundred and twenty-seven so far this year. Self-initiate activity, uh, we've had approximately one hundred and seventy-one area checks, sixty billion, business checks, uh, sixteen foot patrols, um, and twelve house watches that we have participated in from animal control. Uh, we have had, we are slightly down on calls for service for animals, um, two hundred and two compared to two hundred and twenty-nine. Dogs are usually our primary animal call. We had a hundred and forty-nine this year compared to a hundred and seventy-five last year, so dogs are staying in their home. Um, however, the dogs that are at large, we've had more this year, a hundred and five compared to ninety. So I guess I should take back what I just said. Uh, nine bites compared to sixteen last year. Uh, we've been pounded fourteen, where we could not find their registered owner or their, uh, where they lived. Um, we've had sixty nuisance calls compared to sixty-three last year, so just basically the same. Wild animals, basically the same. Farm animals, basically the same. Um, training, we had a significant amount of training in the third quarter. I don't have those numbers, um, but, uh, we are well on our way of meeting our, our requirements. Our training calendar goes from July to July. Um, so we have, uh, a lot of our officers are already, if not at their forty, they're very close. And, uh, coming into the, uh, new year, we'll be focusing on some in-service training, um, instead of the forty-hour training blocks that we have been sending people to. And I think that is all I have.
Any questions for Chief Henson?
Yeah. Um, have we been leveraging the Johnson County, the, um, co-responder program at all?
Yes. I don't have the statistics as how many times that we have been able to use her. Uh, she is used in an emergency standpoint. Um, so if we have a call that involves mental health, um, and she is on duty, uh, we certainly get to use her and she's very helpful.
They're increasing capacity, I believe, for that up at the county, so.
Yes, they are adding a second, uh, co-responder. Um, and I've had a few talks with Johnson County and Gardner in the past to see if there was a way of, of, of having the ability to use them, uh, a little bit more in-depth through follow-up. Um, that would require us entering into, uh, some, um, collaboration with their salaries, which we have not addressed yet.
Well, I'm talking actually with Johnson County Mental Health directly. They can be leveraged, is my, my understanding.
Well, so Johnson, co-responders is through Johnson County Mental Health.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Johnson County Mental Health also has a mobile crisis unit that can be, uh, come out from occasion to occasion, and we also use a twenty-four-hour hotline. So they help with any kind of, um, assessments, uh, over the phone and determine whether a person needs to go to the hospital for a further assessment or whether they can remain in their home. So we do use them, if that's what you're referencing. Those are the three areas that we use, uh, Johnson County Mental Health in.
Because I, my understanding is, is one of the, and correct me, I could be wrong. It's, it's one of the beauties about it, is if it is a mental health thing where the issue is, is that that person has to be taken to a facility of some type. Is that correct?
No. After they are assessed over the phone, based off of what circumstances are, they will determine whether a person has to go to the hospital for a further assessment or they may end up staying at home. And then they would reach out and follow up to see if they can have some outpatient, uh, follow-up.
Okay.
But not everybody who has had a mental health crisis is in a position where they are required to go to the hospital.
No, no, that's not what I was saying. What I was saying is, is that the, the co-responder could actually help with the paperwork so that the police don't have to do that and they could get back on the streets a little bit quicker.
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I was alluding to. It's actually, so I might have misstated my question.
And that's when we get to use the current co-responder in an emergency situation, if she is on duty.
And that's where I was saying this.
Yeah, but if she's not on duty, we don't get, we don't have one to use. So we can't call, uh, our neighboring agency who may have one to come and help, so our officers will be required to do that.
Beauty of them increasing the capacity, could help our police officers to get back on the street in those situations maybe sooner.
Right. But with the co-responder program, just so you all are aware, that, um, if you have a, what's, the advantage of it is they can do follow-up. Uh, and the co-responder that we get to use, uh, technically, uh, that's not what we can use her for. We are able to almost use her in an emergency situation. Um, we do have some folks where, uh, we have had multiple phone, multiple calls to, and she has helped us, uh, to try to, uh, reduce that recidivism and find a long-term solution. And so we're very appreciative of that, but that is above and beyond what we're, uh, really able to have use of, because we don't, she's not our co-responder, if that makes any sense. So.
All right. Anything else?
No.
All right. Chief, thank you very much. Mr. Jenkins, before we get to you, I'm gonna ask if everybody will stand and join me in ovation for a career well, well. Any report tonight?
Just a short, uh, comment. I want to thank the city of Spring Hill for the opportunity over the years to be your city attorney in the last thirty-three years. Uh, I've had the honor to work with the city staff, administrations, under the mayors, under the city council, uh, and I've appreciated the opportunity to serve them and help them make this city such a good city. Uh, secondly, with respect to public service, I've seen first hand over the last year what it takes to be a good councilman, good mayor, good state. year what it takes to be a good councilman, good mayor, good state. I'm always very impressed with the city of Spring Hill. I believe it's one of the greatest cities in Johnson County and not the state.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Can I ask, who was your first mayor? Was it Mayor Teeter or Mayor Masterson?
Mayor Teeter.
Okay.
At that time, it was customary for the city attorney to sit next to the mayor. I don't know why that was, other than if there was any shootings or anything like that.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's changed a lot, because it was just really the city administrator and the city clerk were writ in terms of the real crisis. There've been a lot of changes, but I've lived in Johnson County almost all my life, served not in three cities, but I truly do feel like this city has always had the innerest of its citizens and is competitive to any city, different Johnson County. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.